Our guest today is Courtney Durritt, candidate for Knox County Commission District 2.
Okay, thanks for being on the show today Courtney. And I guess the first question is this. On the surface, you know, it's kind of interesting, you and your opponent's policies and platforms are striking similar, you know, relative to other races in our state where it's a bit more divisive between Republican and Democrat. How do you differentiate your plans for pushing strong schools and strong sustainable economic growth with your competitor?
So with the schools aspect of it, I am a teacher. I've been a full-time high school government teacher for seven years. I've experienced it firsthand. I know what teachers go through. I know what students go through. Aside from the academic portion, you know, the social background, knowing that some of them come to school and that's the only meals that they get. Just so with that, and I come from, my mom is a 33-year retired elementary music teacher. My dad taught high school and currently teaches at LMU in Tulsa City. So it's in the family. I even married into teachers. My mother-in-law is a teacher and my sister-in-law is a teacher. And so it's, I have that firsthand experience of education, what teachers go through, what principals go through, what students go through, and even I'm on our PTO committee at our children's school. And so I have that real-world experience and am able to be in those communities. As a substitute now, I have the unique ability to be in any school throughout the entire school system. So you know, I could take a job at Farragut, I could take a job at Central, I could take a job at Fountain City Elementary, I could take a job at Lonsdale, I could take a job anywhere. And I really think that the health of the community is really demonstrated by the health of the school and which, in the community in which it serves. And so I have that unique ability to be able to go to these schools as part of my job and to know what's going on in that community, to find out what are the issues that they're facing. If they, you know, had an issue with lead in a water fountain, I can find that out. I have that, or if students are coming to school just for their meals and that sort of thing, I can find that out and know that for each unique and individual school. And I think that there can separate me from my opponent. Of course, we want, I think everyone wants our students to be healthy, our teachers to be healthy, our communities to be healthy, and they want our schools to be funded properly. But where the differences lie are that I have that ability to go into any school on any day and really get to know those students, those teachers, those principals, and those parents, and know what their problems are, and then address them from there. And as far as economic development, you know, we've got to make sure when we are developing that we are not infringing upon neighborhoods and that we're not adding any kind of, or adversely affecting neighborhoods as we develop. And I'm speaking specifically to something that's going on right around where I live. Derek Gardens is dealing with development of the old Fountain City diner. And a house has been torn down. And they're just worried that where does it stop, right? Where does the line stop with development? Is it going to continue to be kind of, because as soon as that, it seemed like almost as soon as that house was torn down, the next house was up for sale. And so, you know, of course, they got very worried that something was going to happen and it was just going to keep encroaching, 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 until all of a sudden, there's no more historic neighborhood. And so, you know, I want to be the voice of those people, of residents. I'm not saying that development is bad at all, but I'm saying we do need to be proactive, not reactive. We need to make sure that everything has been addressed that could possibly be negative from said development before the development happens. Like, is it going to increase the school's population? A lot of times, school's, school population isn't, is kind of an afterthought, especially when we come to new developments as far as for housing. So we need to make sure that the current infrastructure that's in place can take care of whatever development is going in.
Switching gears a little bit, let's talk about law enforcement. You've mentioned a couple of different goals. One thing that you've said you'd like to do is create an officer liaison program that would assign a Knox County Sheriff's Deputy to participating neighborhoods. You've also mentioned the need for an oversight committee for KCSO. So in a time of so much division and mistrust between the community and law enforcement on a national scale, how do you sell the idea of an officer liaison to your constituents? And then the flip side of that is, how do you sell the idea of the oversight committee to what's currently a pretty conservative county commission and a highly politicized sheriff's office?
So for the officer liaison program, the city currently has one. And I know that from my own personal experience from starting our neighborhood organization. We didn't have a neighborhood organization, we kind of formed over traffic in the beginning, but have continued it as just to create that sense of community and family and safety. And when we were assigned our officer, he comes to our, he would come to our meetings and he would give us updates on things going around in our neighborhood, specifically, things going around in the area and just crime in general. And then he could be our point of contact if something were to happen. You know, it puts a face with law enforcement. It puts someone you trust, it builds that trust. It kind of bridges that gap that we have between residents and law enforcement and that, I don't want to say mistrust, just no trust at all anymore. And so it can start mending that relationship and it gives a person that residency, every time they have a meeting, that they can contact, even if it's something very minute. As opposed to saying, oh, well, if I call the non-emergency number, nothing's going to happen. So it really gives that, it really gives you that sense of this is a real person. He's here, he or she is here to help for me, help me. In our case, it was a he. So he was here to, he's here to help us, he's here to protect us, to be here if we need him for anything regarding safety, anything regarding any kind of petty crime, or for instance, we were broken into, but this is before we started this organization, so we didn't have this. And so I, you know, didn't know who to call. We weren't even home when it happened. And so, you know, it gives you that sense of, yes, there is someone that is looking out for our best interests when it comes to crime. And so that, to me, it's a real, really easy sell to residents, to neighborhoods, because it does, it gives you that person, that contact. If anything happens, you know who to contact. You have a name, you have a face, and you have a phone number, and even an email. And so it does bridge that gap with law enforcement. Now, on the flip side with the oversight committee, you know, I kind of compare that to being a teacher who gets evaluated. So we all, as teachers, have to be evaluated four times a year. And it doesn't matter when, of course, some of them are planned, but some of them aren't. And if I, and I welcomed it, you know, come to my room anytime you want because I'm here to do my job. And so if you're doing your job as a law enforcement officer, you should have no issue or qualm against having any kind of oversight. I mean, I would welcome it. I told my principals, you can come in my room anytime because I'm here, I'm doing the best I can do every single day. And I welcome any kind of feedback, positive, negative, whatever, because I grow from it. That's the only way to grow is from feedback. And if you don't know how the public is perceiving you, then you cannot change your ways and grow from that. And, I mean, there's always room for improvement, always, in any aspect of life, there's always room for improvement. And I think that's how we could sell that to, like you said, a pretty, a fairly Republican commission and sheriff's office.
All right, Courtney, you talked about this a little bit earlier. As far as Knox County wants to be more cognizant of the effect that development has on residents residing within the affected areas. It seems like a logical stance, makes perfect sense. But how do you effectively communicate this to constituents and developers so as not to come across as anti-business and wanting to stifle growth, especially since your competitor is a vice president at a prominent Knoxville construction company?
Well, if, you know, if a developer is wanting to put a business in, or if a business is wanting to come to a particular area, you know, of course, it would be to build their business to make money, to make a profit. But at the same time, we have to make sure that we are, you know, making it a better place for everyone that's there. You know, a business isn't going to succeed if people aren't going to go to it. Or a housing complex isn't going to succeed if people don't rent or buy from said housing complex. And if it has adverse effects on the neighborhood, if it makes traffic so undesirable that people don't want to be there, then the original developer or the business is going to suffer from that. And so it would behoove anyone who's looking to develop someplace to make sure that everyone around them is on board. But just beforehand, I'm not saying, let's just not develop anything. I'm just saying, let's just take a couple of extra steps on the front end to make sure that what you're going to do is going to support the neighborhood, or, and vice versa, the neighborhood is going to support your business. Because if it's not, then we're already at an impasse. We're already at, we're already starting a development that's on a negative foot. And so if we go ahead and do a little bit of legwork on the front end, then we can make sure that the development would succeed, whatever it is, if it's a business or if it's some kind of housing. And at the same time, the neighborhood would participate in said business, or even promote it if it's a housing complex, say, oh, well, we love living over here because X, Y, and Z. And if it's, if we've gone through those extra steps on the front end, we're not having to be reactive after the development has been built or put up, or, you know, gone in, done all this thing, all these things caused flooding, caused a whole lot more traffic than what was already there. So definitely, we need to look at both sides. And I feel like, for the most part, it just seems, we seem to just discuss with the developers, not necessarily the residents who are already in the area where the development will happen. And so that's what, that's my goal, is to make sure, is to kind of bring both sides to the table and do those different, be the mediator, really, is really what it would be. And, you know, hopefully, and play devil's advocate too on both sides. You know, bring up the negatives to this side and bring up the negatives to this side, and of course, bring up the positives. And to make, and to bring everybody to the table and make sure everyone feels like their voice is being heard. Because I think that is where problems happen, is when one party feels like their voice isn't being heard and they're not being listened to.
I think that's a pretty logical stance. Let's pivot towards some of your work experience. If elected, you'd be representing what's considered a swing district on county commission. And you kind of, you have a pretty wide breadth of experience from working in the clerk's office at the state senate to working for a couple of years for Austin East High School. And I'd like for you to talk to us a little bit about how that wide-ranging experience of working with people from all walks of life, how do you, do you think that that has better prepared you for representing people on the county commission in a swing district where it's a bit more diverse maybe than other districts in Knox County?
I do. And like you mentioned, so right out of college, I worked for the clerk's office for the state senate. I had to work for both Democratic and Republican senators, because I didn't just work for one, I worked for all 33 of them. I ran the legislative process, wrote the committee calendars, wrote the session calendars, actually ran the session while they were in session and in the off-season, would be assigned to individual offices. Didn't matter if it was Democrat, didn't matter if it was Republican, I had to go. And so, and I had to work for them. And, you know, that, so that, early on, I was about 23 when I had this job. And so that, early on, put me in that situation where I had to, you know, be able to reach across party lines and to deal with constituents. For the most part of one particular, we call it off-season, from the fall and winter, I was in Senator Steve Sutherland's office, who is from East Tennessee and from Greenville area, and would have to respond to his constituents as if I were him. And of course, asking him for his advice on things, but you know, I was his assistant while she was recovering from some health issues. And so I got really thrown into it, and he's a Republican senator. He just, I mean, there was no me saying, hey, I'm a Democrat, so I'm going to do the best I can. It was, that was not a part of it. I had to just do my job to the best of my ability. Same thing with teaching. You know, when I teach government, of course, my students, first day, they walk in, they say, are you Republican or Democrat? And I tell them, and this is how I approach this campaign right now, is if I'm doing my job correctly, I am serving everyone's needs, you will not be able to tell. And so throughout the course, we would, I would pause a minute and say, so, who thinks they know what party I am? Show of hands, I'm not saying, tell me, just raise your hand. Okay, remember that. And we, you know, a couple of weeks later, do the same thing, until the end of the course, we have a discussion on it. You know, and it ended up being kind of a civics lesson on people, on social, on society and social interactions. And I would say, so, how many of you think I'm a Democrat? Raise your hand. How many of you think I'm a Republican? Raise your hand. Now, why do you think that? And so it started, and it turned into this discourse between these high school seniors who were able to explain and reason why they thought I was a member of a particular party. And of course, I never, I still never told them, because I wanted them to just keep having that conversation. But they, I mean, here they are, putting this into, putting what they have learned into like present-day, real-life stuff. And so, and you know, a lot of them, I would say, so, do you think you would lean towards this party or this party, and why? And a lot of them was because that's what their parents were. And I said, that's not necessarily a bad thing, but, you know, here are these things, and we just do a blind test and go through that. So all of that has prepared me to be able to represent that this diverse group that is District 2. I mean, I've also worked with the city's Office of Neighborhoods. And so, again, bringing them together to plan the neighborhood conference. So I've been able to bring all these different people and, you know, put my own personal views aside and do what's best for the community, small communities, school communities, and the community at large. And so I have, I do feel like that has prepared me. And even seeing my parents, my mom being a teacher, and I didn't mention this, but when I was really young, my dad was on the Knoxville City School Board. And so, you know, seeing him do these things to help everyone, not just a particular group, really stuck with me, and that's just what we did. And that's how I was brought up, is that we're here to help people because we want people to help us if we need it. And so I do feel like, like, the path I've taken throughout my life has really led me to this position to be able to lead this district that is very diverse. And that's another reason why I'm running. I feel like we need more diversity on county commission. You know, we need people of different professional backgrounds and representing people of different backgrounds, professional backgrounds. We need hard-working people, people who represent those, the working class. You know, I don't, I'm no, I'm just some average person. I am no standout by any means. And so I just want to be that person that is representing the diverse population of District 2. And yeah, I really feel like everything I've done has led me to this point in my life.
So with your and your family's deep roots in education, you've probably had a lot of time to think about what needs to change, what could be better, what public education needs to be successful. We know that county commission doesn't really get to call the shots when it comes to Knox County schools, but there are some ways that commission can have an impact, budget especially is a big one. So do you anticipate advocating for any kind of increased funding for schools? And then are there any specific education initiatives that you would champion as a commissioner?
Oh, I would love to advocate for, of course, increased budget, but, you know, at this time, well, there's two, two kind of drawbacks to that right now, is one, we're, you know, the time of COVID, when we're lacking in spending and funds, that would be incredibly hard to do right now. But also, it still costs money whether we're in a pandemic or not. And it's really hard to, you know, foresee the future that, yes, I would love to be able to put this much more money towards education. Of course, that's definitely going to be a very top-of-the-list thing for me to, item for me to research once in the position, especially with the budget, making sure we're not mishandling funds and other places that could go to the school's budget if they need, if they want it. You know, I know this year, the school's budget was cut by $4 million because of the pandemic. And so, you know, just make sure we can put that money back and maybe find more. But as far as programs to champion, it's, I am glad, it's unfortunate, but I am very glad that we are now a one-to-one school district. I say it's unfortunate because it took a pandemic for us to get there. But I feel that was one of my main points, or one of my main initiatives I would like to look into once in, what's in the scene, was becoming a one-to-one technology school system. Because it, again, in case of, in the times of emergency, school can continue. Now, had we done this last summer, we wouldn't have missed a beat once we had to stay home after spring break. We could have continued new assignments, new lessons, new learning, and not just review. And so that was a big one, and that actually, that idea actually came when I was at home with my kids on their schedule they hated me for, for making. Because we did, we went to school in the kitchen, right here on this counter. And they hated it, they thought, oh, I thought we were done, I thought it was early summer. I said, no, your mom's a teacher, sorry. So, you know, they kind of complained about that. But that, you know, if we had had the one-to-one thing, that, from then, from in March, that would have been great. So something I would like to look into would also be, I know they're working with some internet providers. I would also like to make sure all students in Knox County have internet for this purpose. You know, we could be off and on and off and on for who knows how long. So we need to make sure students especially have reliable internet, but students and their family have reliable internet and so they can, so we can continue school, not just have to go back to review like we were. Something else I would like to champion would just be to ensure that schools, individual school, needs are being met. You know, you've got the schools that are more centralized and local downtown versus the outer-lined areas. And, you know, we need to make sure that each student is getting what they need. And that doesn't just mean educational needs, that means social needs, it means mental health needs. So we need to look at the student as a whole, not just as an educational test score number. And the same with teachers. You know, my, part of my evaluation and my pay grade was, well, not pay grade, like with the step, but if I got any kind of bonus, because I was at a tap school. A lot of that, 35% of my evaluation, whether I'm a good teacher or not, is based on test scores of my students, that I have no control over whether they come to class or not. Now, that's a state thing, but I can, at least, we can start, change starts at the local level. So maybe we can start advocating for that. But really, just looking at students and teachers and principals as individuals, not as numbers, and, you know, not looking at them as dollar signs. Let's address issues that they have while they're in our care, because most of students' time is spent in school.
Work in the Office of Neighborhoods, we help connect neighborhoods to resources and assist in building strong neighborhood associations. Typically, more privileged neighborhoods deal with very different challenges than lower-income neighborhoods. But if you could pinpoint one thing that you would wave your magic wand and change to make life better in every neighborhood across the county, what would it be? And if elected, what steps would you take to address the issue?
So yes, internet for all would be my main magic wand moment. Because, like you said, so it's different with poorer communities versus more wealthier communities, their access to internet. If internet were considered a utility, we would not have this issue right now, where the school system is doing the best it can to help get every student internet access. And if it was part of our KEB bill, or whatever utilities board your area is assigned to, if it was a part of that and just considered, you know, something that we need along with water and electricity, we would not have this problem. I actually, in between working for the state senate and going back to get my master's in education, I worked briefly for about six months for the Department of Economic and Community Development, it's a very long title, in the Technology Development Division, and actually started the Fiber to the Home Grant that a lot of Tennessee companies, it started as a rural program and grant, and it still kind of is. Because I looked it up recently to see how far it had come, if it was infiltrating into cities or not yet. But no, it looks like it's still mainly for rural areas. But it's that notion that these areas, these outlined areas that don't have this access, this is a grant for them to be able to get fiber. And, you know, for people who might, may not know about it, fiber would be underground and it's light and it's a lot easier to do, is to get rural areas internet. And so that actually, that kind of, that concept of internet as a utility started with me back in 2005, even before I'd gotten my master's in education. And so that would be my magic wand trick, to wave, to make internet be considered a utility and make it just available to everyone. And so using my, I would use my position with county commission to work with city council members, who I know are already trying to make this happen. I know that there is a survey out right now to see if people are interested. And I think it's through KEB also, to see if this is something that would be successful. And so I would definitely work with all the resources available to help make that happen.
Well, Courtney, you answered all the easy questions.
Oh, gosh.
Now, it is time for the lightning round with Lisa. Good luck.
Thank you.
Are you ready?
I don't know.
You're not ready. I can assure you, you are not ready.
I can assure you, you are not ready.
Okay.
Not allowed to have an attorney. You're not allowed to have any other kind of resources. You just got to answer these questions. You got to stay within the parameter of the questions I'm asked and you gotta, you gotta give me an answer. I will, because you're running for political office. You can get one voter fraud. So, yell voter fraud. Yell voter fraud.
Voter fraud.
Okay. You got one voter fraud, so you can pass on one question. You ready? You ought to be nervous. This is the hardest part. Girl, I'm telling you, it's tough. Okay, Elvis Presley or Jack Daniels?
Oh, I'm going Jack Daniels.
Woo, God, I'm shocked by that. Okay, yay, I like that. Okay, diamonds or pearls?
Pearls.
Uh, what's more important, a failing student or a voting constituent?
A failing student.
Favorite flavor of gay rig?
Oh, uh, they, I can never find it, so I don't even forget to remember the name of it. Citrus cooler.
Okay, yay. Little Kim or Trina?
Little Kim.
Oh. Sidewalks or red lights?
Sidewalks.
A working solution or a diverse conversation?
A working solution.
Science-driven or policy-driven?
Science.
Fly fishing or fishnet stockings? Okay. Tennessee Titans or the UT Lady Balls?
Lady Balls.
Okay. Ruth Gator, uh, Ruth Bader Ginsburg or any breathing white male?
I just, I was going to say, doesn't matter what the O R is, it's RBG all the way.
Ah, my girl. Okay, hope for the future or fear from our history?
That's my voter fraud.
Oh, you, you used that way too fast. Okay. Rosé or beer?
Beer.
Jello shots or shots of tequila?
Tequila.
Oh, my God, I want to hang out with you. Okay, mountains or beach?
Say that again?
Mountains or beach?
Mountains.
Okay, now, this is the tough one. Liddens or Louis?
Damon and Annie's?
Oh, you can't say that. See, you should have saved your voter fraud, but okay. That's it, you made it.
I have a funny Louis story.
Okay.
Oh, do you want to hear it or, or no?
Sure.
So, um, I, both times I was crack, like on the vert, like trying to get my chil- just to have birth, I was tired of it. I was told to go eat at Louis', and it worked both times.
Oh, so it sent you into labor? So, Louis causes children?
I've heard that too. My grandmother was from North Knoxville, and that is like, that is legendary in North Knoxville.
I had never heard of it. And I, it was my, I was calling somebody for this, in, in the school system, in the district office. And I was like, I don't know if I'm going to make it back before we start back or not because it was Christmas break. And she said, go to Louis'. And within 12 hours, I was in labor.
All right. Well, I didn't get that in sex ed, but that's okay.
Courtney Durratt, thank you so much for being on our show. She's running for District Two County Commission, and we'll give you the last word.
Just, yeah, early voting's been going on a week. We've got another week or so to go, and then August 6th is election day. Please, if you're voting by absentee ballot, get them turned in. We need to get them counted ahead of time. Don't want to wait till election day because we will just, we won't know the results. So, get them in as soon as you can.